I call a meeting of the Bloomington School Board to order on Monday, the 23rd of September. Would you please join me now with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia, standing on your head in this small, representative justice.
A motion for approval of the agenda is in order?
Move approval second.
Is made in second and any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. And it carries. We'll move now to a recognition of students, staff and public. We don't have a scheduled presentation tonight, but we do have an opportunity for anyone to address the board on a topic that is not on our agenda. Would anyone like to approach the board and make a statement at this time? All right. And please, if you would introduce yourselves as you come up to speak. And we welcome you.
Good evening Chairman Culver, Board members, Superintendent Fujitaki, members of the Cabinet, and the listening audience. My name is Mary Sedergrin. I've been an RN for more than 26 years. I worked in long-term care, as well as being a rep for a durable medical equipment company specializing in wound care. I've worked in acute care, in an acute care setting as a cardiac nurse, and currently teach and recertify all healthcare staff in our district in CPR and first aid. This is my 16th year in the Bloomington Public School District. My job at present is floating and substituting where needed to help overwhelmed nurses try to manage their office and their sanity. I've been involved in negotiations for the Bloomington Health Services and COTAs unit for over the past three years. I signed up for this assignment because I felt the nurses were being undervalued and overworked. Prior to that, I had no idea what the process entailed to bring about needed change in our district. We've been told to trust the process and will make it right for the nurses. After three years of work, countless hours researching and collecting data, hours upon hours chatting around a table, we still don't know what the process is or how the process works. How are we expected to trust a process that has failed us for the past 815 days? We have evolved in the healthcare office from taking care of minor injuries and immunization record-keeping to many clinics, managing the medical care of many complex students. We are following the guidelines of the Nurse Practice Act set by the State of Minnesota that governs all RNs to assess, collaborate with healthcare teams, developing and implementing nursing interventions. We delegate, we advocate, we coordinate, we supervise, and we reevaluate the medical care being provided to our students. We play a major role in the health and safety of the children we serve in Bloomington. Keeping students safe and healthy keeps them in the classroom ready to learn and succeed. This is, as I said, day 815 without a contract. My journey with negotiations has been frustrating, to say the least. A few weeks ago, we invited Superintendent Fujitaki and school board members to talk with the nurses. Mr. Fujitaki and two of the school board members did accept that invitation. We presented to them our concerns, frustrations, feelings of being undervalued by our school district. As of today, we've had no valuable response by the district administration regarding our conversations. The only acknowledgement is through a third-party email. Again, feeling disappointed, undervalued, and disrespected. We feel we've provided enough supportive information to justify looking at a wage scale, to go along with our level of education, and our job responsibilities that have evolved over the last eight years since we restructured to a RN model of healthcare delivery system in our district. We feel our compensation system is broken, but we're told that's how we do it here. I think it's time to change how we do it here. We need to make it right here. Thank you for this opportunity to address you this evening.
Thank you.
Well, hello again. My name is Susie Duncan, and I am the registered nurse at Hillcrest Community School. I was here at a school board meeting last January about why we deserved a fair settlement. And we were told at that time that the district would make it right for the nurses. So we backed off, and we had faith that the school district would make it right. We stopped. We just paused and let the system work. And I can say that at this time, my colleagues and I feel very unvalued and, quite frankly, betrayed by the school district. As the district moves forward and promotes a referendum for safety and security, it's going to remodel buildings and entryways, I want to remind the district that one of the biggest assets to safety and security are already in place, and that's the district health associates. We promote safety and security every minute of every day. And in the event that something happens to someone, whether it's a student, staff, visitor, we're the first people called. So my colleagues and I would like to see the district step up and do what's right for the health associates who have been without a contract for 815 days. And I'm guessing we may hear that number a few more times. So thank you for, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Fujitaki, Chairman Culver, members of the board, members of the cabinet, and listening audience. My name is Jennifer Hayes, and I am in my 15th year as a nurse at Poplar Bridge Elementary. I am also a member of the Nurses Negotiations Settlement Committee. The Negotiations Settlement Committee was formed last year as a support group put together to help facilitate communication with the other nurses, district employees, district families, and you, the school board. When I first was asked to be part of the settlement committee, I was very excited to learn about the process of negotiation, how it happened, and to help in any way that I could to see that a fair and equitable contract was reached for the nurses at Bloomington Public Schools. That feeling of excitement has long ago left me. I am extremely discouraged by the fact that we have been without a contract for 815 long days. I have asked around quite a bit, and no one can recall a group of Bloomington employees being without a contract for that long. I find myself wondering, why are we in this situation? We have the support of the other labor groups in the district. We have the support of the families that we serve. We have the support of our coworkers. We have the support of the community members that we have shared our story with. The only group that has seemed to not support us is the heads of the school district. It leaves our health services members feeling very undervalued and very insignificant. The settling of our contract has obviously not been a priority for the last 815 days. There have been numerous negotiation sessions without much movement and all. In fact, I spoke to you at the board meeting in January, some eight months ago, and I shared our concerns with you at that time. I feel like that I could get up here and read that same story again, and it would be completely accurate today as it was eight months ago. So little has changed in that time, in eight months of negotiating. We, as a group, are very committed to be at a presence at the board meetings, at the schools, and in the community until a fair and equitable contract is reached. The only 20, there are only 29 nurses and COTAs in the district, but we have strong voices and lots of support at many levels in the district. We intend to use the support to get our story out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening Superintendent Fujitaki and members of the school board and listening audience. My name is Diana Ekstrom. I am the health associate at Olson Middle School in the Bloomington Transition Center. I am a licensed practical nurse and a certified BLS instructor for the American Heart Association. I am also a member of the Negotiations Settlement Committee. Well, you're probably going to feel like this is a broken record, but I'm going to say it anyhow. I would like to discuss just how I and we, health associates and COTAs, feel after 16 months of failed negotiation and 815 days without a contract. These are just some of the words that I use to describe how I'm feeling. Discouraged, frustrated, disappointed, disheartened, upset, let down, angry, disgusted, and underappreciated, all of which you know are all characterized as negative feelings. How would you all feel if you had to go to work feeling like this on a daily basis? When I decided to go to school in the nursing, into nursing school, I felt it was a very, that nursing profession is a very valued, respected occupation. Well, unfortunately, I don't feel like the Bloomington School District Administration feels that same way. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Culver, Board members, Cabinet members, Superintendent Fujitaki, and the listening audience. My name is Kathy Distel. This year, I'm working at the Pond Family Center with the early childhood programs. My position of leadership is as chief negotiator. I'm here today on behalf of the BFT, BHA, Bloomington Health Services, to ask for your help. We are health services, educated, licensed professionals. We feel supported by the teachers, special ed staff, paras, cooks, and other labor groups within our buildings. We repeatedly are told by many parents and members of the community how much they value and appreciate the services we provide. Unfortunately, we do not feel the same support and value from the district administration. We are now, again, 815 days without a contract. We have continued to meet with the district team and school board representative to try and come to agreement on a fair and equitable contract. While we have been able to work through many language items and some of the workload issues, we have not been able to come to an agreement on a new salary schedule that reflects the responsibility and work that we do. This is my 21st year working for Bloomington Schools. I've been a part of the negotiations team for the past 12 years. During this time, I've seen our department go through many changes. In 2005, we switched and went to an RN model to help address the changing needs of our students. In the past several years, more programs have been added to our schools. We now house the students who formerly were serviced by 287, Vision, Strive, Boat, Dimensions Academy, Elements, Kinder Prep, Early Learners, amongst other programs. We have also had to make adjustments to accommodate the changing needs and dynamics of our families that we serve. Increase in diversity, more families living in poverty, lack of sufficient healthcare coverage, rising social and mental health issues, to name a few. Along with this comes students with complex medical healthcare needs. We have had little support added to health services to meet these needs. Most positions in the district have a caseload maximum that when exceeded, additional support is added. This has not been the standard for health services. We are expected to take on as many students as walk through our door regardless of how many programs are added. It is time that the district recognizes the skills, effort, responsibility, education, and working conditions of the Health Services Department. As the changing medical needs of our student population continues to evolve and grow, so does the level of care and expertise that our nurses and COTAs provide. We are planning a rally on October 14th from 6:00 to 6:45 before the next school board meeting, and we invite you and the school board members to join us. We are committed to meeting the needs of all of the students in Bloomington, and we will be here until our voices are heard and we get a fair settlement. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Is there anyone else who'd like to address the board at this time? Move to the next item on our agenda, which is our Part A Agenda Block of items. Is there a motion to approve Part A?
It's not moved second.
Motion to approve, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. We next move to Part B Agenda. Item number one is the integration plan, a revised budget for 2013, 2014 in that plan, and will be addressed by the head of our department on educational opportunity, Kena Wade Hardley.
Good evening.
And there is not a motion required in advance. This is a report. There is a resolution. Are we getting the report first, the resolution first? Get the resolution and discuss that. All right. There is a resolution available. Would someone can make that motion before we discuss?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It resolved that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approved the integration education equity plan budget for the 2013-2014 school year. This budget is contingent upon receiving funds in the amount of $1,506,950 from the Minnesota Department of Education. In the event of a decrease in funding, the contents of the plan and corresponding budget will be adjusted accordingly.
That's the wrong resolution.
That's the wrong resolution.
Remember the right one?
Yes Director Hibbs.
It resolves the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the revised integration revenue budget for the 2013-2014 school year.
Moved and seconded. Thank you.
Good evening.
Proceed Ms. Hardley.
We received $441,338 more than we expected this school year. And on the sheet that you received, it really breaks it down how we expended, the expenditures, how we use the expenditures this year. Early childhood, that's transportation, Spanish-speaking liaison, different things that we needed for our early kinders, for early childhood, that amount came to $242,419. We have an opening for an East Side Pathways to Graduation Coordinator. That is 89, and you'll see that on your sheet. We have a Somali liaison who's been working with us for a year and a half, and she has been a casual employee. We did not have the funds to pick her up. Now we do have the funds to make her full-time, so we have moved that item forward. We have reinstated the hours that were cut by the current liaisons to where they were and to help with the cuts and make them feel better about the job that they're doing. Then we have implemented the technology integrated pilot, which I'm really excited about, that Sean Beaverson is helping us with. We have a teacher at Olson, a teacher at Valley View Middle School that will be doing some integrated learning using technology. And then they will switch classes every now and then, and the kids will get to meet each other, and they will be studying the same topics. So it really is integration, east and west, so I'm really excited about that. And with that, all of our dollars are expended, $441,338.
All right, thank you. Does the board have questions? And then is there further discussion? Director Bergstrom.
I would just like to say thanks for coming. Thanks for all the work that you guys do. Don't think I don't see you back there. The camera sees you too. We appreciate what you guys do, and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. I really would like to acknowledge the team. They are an absolute amazing team, and so just please stand up, because I just think it's worthwhile. In Bloomington, we don't get enough recognition for the things that we do. Richard Scott, Julia Gregor, Emma Walton, Luis Madrid, and Nelson Madrid, and our leadership students. So thank you so much.
Hey, thank you. Yes, Director Corman.
Yes. Tina, could you explain a little bit, just to kind of have that background information again, how this change happened after, you know, because of the legislature and, you know, how much money we ended up getting, or was that money taken away at the beginning and then everything came back again, or was it just added in addition to it? And when it's added, then, does it start now as of September, or do we wait until January?
No, it started July 1st, but we have to submit a plan before the end of this month so that we get permission. And it was due to a new legislative formula that happened at the state level. So, no, it's not, it's just a different formula that they're using that really helped us in some cases, in some districts it didn't help them, but for us, we benefited. So it's just a new formula that they're using.
Can I just ask about then, specifically about the budget that we have? Not this addition and the proposed addition that we have now for positions or programs, but the budget that we already approved back in March. I was just wondering, because I was going through that information again, and, you know, considering that we have a new kindergarten situation coming next year, and we do have money that goes towards scholarships for kindergarten, what is going to happen with that money? Is that money that we are not, not going to get next year because of the free kindergarten? Or is that something that we get again? Can you explain a little bit what's going to happen with that?
We're required to do a new plan by March 15th of this year, and all monies are contingent on that new plan, whether scholarships are in that plan or not, because we know that that may happen. We probably won't write that in. So, no, scholarships probably won't be written into the plan, but we have to have the Community Collaboration Council by law sit down together, and we have to write a plan to use the expenditures for the next year. This year has already been approved. We use the plan that we already have in place. But next year, we have to write a new plan and submit the new plan that's about achievement and integration. Those are the two pieces that they're looking for. Family engagement was on the forefront at one time. Now it's achievement and integration.
So will family engagement be part of that?
It depends on the committee.
And integration? Depends.
And hopefully you will be on that committee since you're one of our, you're assigned to our department. We need to write a new plan. We need to get started very soon, because it needs to come to you for approval by March 15th.
March 15th.
You're welcome.
Director Hibbs?
Yeah, I just, I had a couple of questions. If you could give us a little more detail on two of the line items of the proposed changes, and those two would be specifically the early childhood money and then the East Side Pathways to Graduation Coordinator.
The early childhood money is to replace transportation that was going to be cut, and we can do that. It's not supplanting. If it's going to go away, we can put that in. And it also takes in screening, early childhood screening for Spanish speakers, as well as we know that we use a service for our language, Spanish speakers, any of our language speakers other than English. And that is very costly. In talking with the staff and doing a needs assessment, we found out that a Spanish-speaking liaison at Southwood would serve us. Family engagement, because that's the very first place that they come in. Second of all, Spanish is the language that we use the most, and hiring a liaison is going to be cheaper than paying the amount of money that we were paying per hour to have someone translate documents or to come to a meeting, and sometimes they didn't come, and the meetings had to be rescheduled. So we were expending a lot of money unnecessarily. So that's why the Spanish-speaking liaison at Southwood and Pond, that person would serve both buildings, is there. The East Side Pathways to Graduation Coordinator is a person who would be working with students on and families on understanding the pathways to graduation and hitting those marks on the, on the big sheet that we have, making sure that the kids are where they're supposed to be, making sure that they are on target, and if they're not, helping them with tutoring, helping them get into the services that they may have barriers to getting to access, accessing. So that Pathways to Graduation Coordinator is to work across the East Side with kids that are, that are assigned to them, to help them be successful beyond high school and into their future lives. Does that help?
Yes. So, so in the case of that coordinator, that would be work that currently isn't being done because it's not been assigned to anyone.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, are there other line items within the early childhood that would, I guess I'm not clear, certainly those two liaisons that you mentioned don't add up to $242,000. Are we talking hundreds of thousands of dollars of transportation, or?
I can't, where's Rod to kind of help me? Didn't bring it, but I know it's $26,000 for transportation, $10 for screening, so...
And the rest of it is to support the scholarships or the...
Oh, yes.
The new program of going district-wide with our early childhood program.
$144,000 is for scholarships for kids to Pond and Southwood only because of integration? Thank you. And that scholarships for pre-K, for students that we not, would not have been able to serve.
Okay.
But only for those two buildings, because if we do it for other buildings, we're, that's intentional racial isolations. So we have to do Southwood and Pond because that would be integration.
Okay. And then are there any, are there any general funds that are being used then to support these different integration activities?
I'm not aware. I wouldn't know that. I wouldn't be privy to that information.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions, and Director Ablen?
Well, that last response brought a question. So the district is going to spend 1.9 million on integration, only 1.9 on integration?
We're going to spend integration revenue dollars.
Pardon?
Will we spend any integration revenue dollars, which is 1.9 million?
Right. So if we wouldn't get this from the state, if that would have been eliminated, we would have addressed integration, how?
In the past, we've always had a, not always, for a long time, we had a diversity department before we had integration revenue, and we would again look at doing something again for diversity and integration. So we'd continue to invest dollars in the program.
$2 million is what percentage of our total budget?
A little under 2%.
Under 2%?
A little under 2%.
As long as I have the floor, can you tell me the difference between $89,000 and $62,000 for two new hires? Why, why the, why the $27,000 differential?
$62 is for a coordinator, somebody who would coordinate across the East Side. It's a different level, dealing with budgets, dealing with different principles, as opposed to a liaison, which total cost is about $62,000.
Okay. Good answer. Thanks.
All right, we've got some good questions here. More? Yes, Director Corman.
Yeah, so then going back to the scholarships, do you have a number of how many scholarships the district was able to provide with, with this integration plan that we had for last year?
It was about 89, around 89, 90. We actually would track the scholarship students. I need to, anything that's in the integration that we use integration dollars for, I report to the state how many progress, all of that kind of stuff to them, of those students. If they drop, if they leave, we track all of that kind of stuff.
Well, then, what we're ultimately talking about, that $242,000, does that represent new staffing? That's new students coming into the program at that level. Is that representing salaries of new people that are teaching those students, or is that...
That 242?
Is that state money then substituting for any other money in our budget that we would have used in providing early education?
I don't have an answer to that as well.
The 144?
The 144?
$144,000 would be offsetting the addition of, I remember correctly, Tom, 528, that would be added to the budget over and above what we did in the past.
Okay. And that represents additional staffing?
That was additional staffing in this year's budget, yes.
Okay. How many additional instructors does that represent then, or what other ways of supporting staffing is that? staffing is that?
I would estimate that'd be two classrooms.
Two classrooms worth of additional instruction. Okay. Thank you. Didn't occur to me until we started this conversation here as to how that, how that plays out. Any other questions? Dina? Others? All right. Thank you. We have a resolution in front of us then. Is there a discussion, debate about that resolution? Or is the board prepared to vote? Seeing no indication of further discussion, I guess we're ready to move to the vote on that resolution. Everyone's clear on what we're voting on? Now, let's move ahead. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And it carries. Thank you very much for being here. Ms. Hartley?
Thank you.
Glad we're able to provide more funding for what it is your department is doing and what we're doing for early education. Next on our agenda, we're moving into the authorization for levy for 2014 payable. Do we have a resolution that we're doing at this time? It's Director Hibbs.
Chair?
Yes.
Result that the School Board of Independent School District 271 approves the property tax levy for the proposed 2013 payable 2014 levy of $48,830,642. Be it further resolved that in the event of any changes to levy amounts by the Minnesota Department of Education, it is the intent of the School Board of Independent School District Number 271 to levy the appropriate amount as allowed by law. The state requires that districts use the term maximum on the certification sheet to allow these corrections to the levy.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Thank you, Board. And we have our resource person and expert, our Executive Director of Finance, Rod Zivkovich, to explain a little further and do some illustrating of what it is we're about tonight. Rod?
Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board members, here tonight to do our annual The objective of tonight is to inform the Board on making the decision about the preliminary levy certification. The Board, as the resolution stated, needs to take action tonight. And we'll be kind of reviewing two different pieces here, the truth in taxation process, and then also information on the preliminary levy. So, the truth in taxation process is the district puts in place a preliminary levy. That levy is presented to the county. The county uses that to send out estimated tax statements to homeowners in November. There's a truth in taxation hearing in December with the Board certifying the final levy, which is then after the first of the year, presented to the county. The county provides tax bills to the taxpayer. So, the overall process, on September 6th, the state released their first preliminary levy data. Tonight, we're talking through that data of what was going to be submitted for the levy. We need to have a final levy to the Hennepin County by the 8th of October. It has to be approved by the Board before September 30th, but changes can be made up until the 8th. And that is part of the reason why for the maximum term is because a lot of times, it's an example now is there is a certificate right now that usually gets signed off on by the Board. The systems at the state right now aren't even up to be able to get those certificates out yet. So, they're still struggling to get all the levy information out to all the people.
If I can just interrupt. Why Scott County?
We have a real little section of Scott County in our school district.
Where?
Southwest corner.
By Dread Scott down there?
No, the grain mill. Bungee, Port Bungee, or however that's called.
And so, we have to put both information, both to Scott and to Hennepin County. And then, in December, the final levy. So, we look at tonight, and then also on December 9th, we'll be looking for levy decisions by the Board. Overall, the MDA calculates the preliminary amounts based on Minnesota State statute and information that the district provides the state. There are five major categories within the levy: referendum, referendum other, which is mainly equity, community services, debt service, and then other, which are the other ones such as health and safety, alt facilities, capital projects. And then, the School Board decides whether to levy the maximum or an amount less than the maximum. So, if we start out first with the referendum, there was a change this year in legislation where it went from a residential pupil unit to just a pupil unit. And so, when you look at this amount, they had to recalculate the value of the per pupil. That's why you see such an increase here of going from 1626 up to 1792. You see the pupil units going down slightly, because this is our actual pupil served. So, you look at our overall calculation, it shows that we're going up a little bit in dollars, but for the most part, are fairly flat. Part of the legislation is that some of the levy is now being paid in state aid. And then, there, the Board approved back in, I believe it was August, of doing a $300 per pupil shift. And then, also, the new legislation had location equity of $424 per pupil, reducing it to get us to the $11,854. And as I mentioned before, is that the pupil unit term is now the new term of how they calculate all the dollars that are paid to a school district versus residential pupil units and adjusted pupil units. It's now just pupil units. So, if we look at it overall, we, last year, we had the referendum revenue at just under $20 million because of the adjustments. It's at $8 million this year. Our prior year adjustments, fairly close, but 133,000 less to come in at this year of 8,200,000. So, if we look at the next category of equity revenue, you kind of see these pieces come back in. You have, our equity overall is pretty much consistent with prior year. This is where the $300 goes. This is where the $424 goes. And then, prior year adjustment, again, annual adjustments to come up with the 8,278,000. And remembering that these two dollar amounts, and this is where it gets confused, these were never new dollars to the district. These are just shifting dollars from the category, the referen, or the levy category of referendum to referendum other. Community service, really no change here. We're same programs. There weren't that, any adjustments in the values of anything within the legislation. Debt service, if you look at debt service, we went from a $10,006 to 9.5. That decrease was due to the refinancing of bonds. And then, the decrease of the other, going from 152,000 to 220, negative 225,000, that is due to where the state and county requires us to levy 105% of what our needs are for principal and interest on an annual basis. And then, what they do in future years, they take that back. What happened last year, we were caught up and in line. This year, they're starting to take it back again. So, that's why you see a reduction in that area this year. Their other category, capital projects levy, similar to both years. Remembering this is not with the possible of the referendum that's out there. This is before the referendum. We cannot record in our preliminary levy anything before the voters have approved it. And then, the other big category within other is our alternative facilities. And you can see over the last eight years, we've spent on average $3.9 million. So, if we look at the overall for our other levies, we went from 14.5 to 16.6, or of about just under $2.1 million increase. So, if we look at our overall levy for pay 14, we're showing it going up $707,000. As you can see with the top two numbers, they pretty much wash themselves out, and the reason for the increase there is the inflationary factor within the referendum to show that about a $74,000 increase. And then, the other category, you kind of see an offset. You have about a $600,000 difference between your debt service and other. And part of that increase within that other is the dollars we talked about last time for putting a placeholder in for space needs that we're looking at. This is a new slide this year to try to keep constant with what we've talked to the voters about of trying to, of keeping our commitment to a, a flat levy of our non-operational area. As you can see, the referendum piece, like I mentioned before, is going up $74,000. The operate, non-operational area, which is, as you can see here, the debt service general and OPEB, alternative facilities, capital projects, health and safety, is fairly flat. And then, our other category is going up about 600,000, and that's mainly due to increases due to the sum and unemployment funding, and then also the dollars for the space needs that we're looking at. So, an overall of $707,000. If we look at a medium value home, as we work with the city and the county to come up with these numbers on an annual basis, last year, the medium value home was 194,500. It dropped slightly to $188,000. The total of the county, city, and school district taxes went from 2761 to 2722, and the school taxes are going down $6 with what we have proposed within the current levy. The overall percentages that are being estimated right now by the three municipalities, the city is 3.22%, the county 0.8%, and as you saw with our presentation, a 1.1, a 1.5, excuse me. So, our next steps tonight, ask for the Board's approval on the preliminary levy. Any levy changes can be done up until October 8th by either the district or the state based on calculations. That's why we've asked, again, as mentioned before, that we're using the maximum term. And part of the reason we're putting in some of these extra items is to make sure, like with the estimate for the space, is once we levy a preliminary, we can't go above that preliminary. So, we're trying to make sure that in case there's any other issues that we have it in place. And that's our presentation. Questions?
Director Bergstrom? Yes. First, let me say thanks for coming. This was interesting reading when I got the packets. Just a quick, quick question. Can you talk a little bit more about space needs for those that are watching at home that might not understand what we're talking about?
Because of new legislation that the state has, are funding full-day kindergarten, we are looking at our, our sites for space for those kindergarten programs. Since we have half-day programs, which you can fit two classrooms in there, now you go to full-day programs, you can only fit one classroom in there. So, we're looking at different options for space, both internally, and we have been provided an option of at hub properties, that they're looking to rent some space, so we might be able to move some programs over to that location and be able to free up some space in our elementary schools.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Is there other discussion, other questions? Well, we're a pretty accepting group here tonight, it looks like. No further probing at this time. All right. You must have made it extremely clear what we're about now with our preliminary approval today of a maximum amount that may be adjusted in the future. All right. Everybody knows what we're being asked to vote on. There will be no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it carries.
Thank you.
And our third and last item on the Part B agenda is our NEXT Technologies for Learning Communication Tools, focusing on the hub. Our Director for District Technology Services, John Weiser, will lead the presentation and discussion. Director Weiser?
Thank you, Chair Culver, Superintendent Fujitaki, Board members. I'm going to frame this presentation tonight, and then, I'm going to hand off the presentation to Katrina Mezra. Katrina is our technology project coordinator in the district. A lot of what you see here is her organization and work. We have, we are featuring tonight the work of, of Todd Walsh, who's a FIAD and health teacher here at Oak Grove Middle School. Sorry, Todd. And this is in a series of presentations that we've done over the last several months to highlight certain areas of technology that are important as we map toward where we want to go next with technology. So, the program we're talking about is called NEXT Technologies for Learning. To frame it for those who are unfamiliar, we have a mission statement, a guiding statement that is, "We'll personalize learning to support students along their pathway to college and career readiness." The Pathways poster is our guiding document. No matter where we are in the district, no matter what we're doing, we're supporting those students on their pathway toward college and career readiness. When we look about, when we talk about NEXT Technologies for Learning, we talk about three elements. Those elements are digital content, that is, taking our existing good curriculum, moving it over into a digital format. As the slide indicates, we were here in August, you saw two teachers from Oak Grove, or Olson Middle School, talk about their, the move in a very exciting way of their science curriculum. The second element is anytime, anywhere learning. This is all the issues around access. It includes access to the internet, but it also includes access to new teaching methods like flipped instruction and hybrid learning. We, we had a presentation that featured part of our team in June. Two fifth-grade math teachers from Normandale Hills School talked about flipping their math instruction. We'll, we'll come back again in about a month from today to talk about access issues out in the, out in the community, a couple of partnerships we're working on. So, we'll be back on this topic in a month. Tonight's presentation is about the third element of NTL. It's about personalizing data. When we talk about personalizing data, we're talking about short-term data, that is, what does a student and a parent need to do to be successful this week, things like grades, attendance, homework, and it's also longitudinal data. How can we take that good assessment data that we have and give it some context so that we can have a conversation with parents about whether we're preparing their, a parent/student for college and career readiness? So, we're here tonight to talk about the hub. This slide is a little complicated, but if you bear with me, it really is pretty good. We, we have some deep and rich data sources, so they're indicated there with those icons. TIES is our student information system. It's all the registration data and census data and attendance data that we keep for our students. The calendar icon there is a represent, representation of our calendar data. We have, every classroom in the district has a calendar attached to it through Google Docs, Google calendars. Our, our classroom websites are done through Google Docs, and so, that's a rich and deep data source. The SDS stands for the Student Data Site. This is Jim Engameyer's creation. Dr. Jim Engameyer, over a large number of years, recently handed over to Dr. Heistad, and you can, as you probably have seen, good data in that database creates good results and good decision-making around where we should go next. That last icon in the lower left... That last icon in the lower left indicates all those other data systems that we have that are rich data sources, things like our IE, or our, our academic seminar database, our RTI database, our discipline database, that help us do the work of educating students. If you combine those data sources, like if you combine the student information system and the Google calendars, I'm combining, we're combining there, you get the outcome of which that hub in the center shows, it takes a student schedule and it maps it to the multiple calendars that are attached to that student's schedule and you get a homework calendar. So there's a snapshot there of a homework calendar that really has behind it, each one of those colored bands represents an individual calendar where a teacher is posting good content, the hub pulls those things together. If you take that student information data and you combine it with the Student Data Site, Dr. Heistad's work, you get pathways to graduation, putting the right data, giving it some context for students and families so they can see longitudinally where they're at on this, this pathways to graduation path. If you take that student information, you combine it with some of our other data sources, you see this snapshot of what teachers see when they log into the hub. So when Todd logs into the hub, he sees his class list and he sees a, a bunch of data about his students. All of those links are clickable. Before those students arrive, he can see which one of them, which, which ones of them have services like 504s, English, English language learners, IEPs. As the year progresses, he can see discipline incidents, he can see health concerns, he can see visits to the nurse's office. And then that last icon in the lower right is about viewing as a student. What does a student see so that I can help support, so I as an administrator, or I as a teacher, or I as a parent can help support a student and see a full picture of their day? I'm gonna hand off now to Katrina and she's gonna talk a little more in depth about those three little snapshots.
So I'm just gonna highlight a couple of the, couple of the most impressive features about the hub. The hub is about a year old, so it's just a baby, but it's something that we've developed and continue to develop, so getting the word out and highlighting the changes is important to us. So if you look at that calendar, you know, I spent eight of my ten years in Bloomington Public Schools as a seventh grade teacher at Oak Grove Middle School, and we wanted to get calendar information out to students. And we tried that in a lot of different ways. We emailed at home, we, you know, and as a math teacher, I had three different levels of math, so I'd put those all on there for every day and then hopefully the parents knew which class their kid was in, unless they're in a clinical math class and blah, 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 right? Gets a little confusing. What's exciting about this is this is the students, this is the students' classes, period. They don't have extra stuff in there, they're not missing stuff, they don't have to wait around and try and find it on eight different webpages, it's all in one place for parents, for students, and for staff members as well that are supporting, that are supporting our students in schools. So for example, I know there's some special ed staff and paraprofessionals who help students check out at the end of the day and say, do you have everything you need in order to do your homework? This is now a resource for them, they know exactly what the homework is and that's something that's been missing, or something we've been struggling with, I guess, over my career in Bloomington. So it's exciting to me to see it up there. Just to point out a couple of other things, you see the phone there, this, the hub is formatted for mobile as well, we see mobile traffic, you know, rising every year as people start accessing more and more information on tablets and phones, and so this is available there. You'll also see the Google Translate button in the upper right-hand corner, that's one more way that we try and communicate with our families, you know. Granted, it's Google Translate, so it's not necessarily a perfect translation and some of them, quite honestly, are a little ridiculous sometimes, but it's one step in the right direction, one more way we try and communicate better. And so just looking at that page too, I, I look at, you know, for example, the top, the top one, it's pretty tiny, you probably can't read it very well, but it says the U.S. Constitution and then talks about what the goal, what the student should learn for the day, it talks about what they did during the day and what the homework they walked away with was. And I talked to a lot of parents in, in my career as a seventh grade teacher and very often at the end of the, the day, the conversation is, hey, how was your day? Fine. What'd you do today? Nothing, right? That, that's probably a pretty typical conversation and we're giving parents a tool to have a different conversation and I think that is kind of the game changer part of this, that's exciting. It gives parents an opportunity to say, so I hear you're talking about the U.S. Constitution, so can you tell me, why do so many people think the Constitution is such a big deal? That's a different way for them to check in and I think that's pretty exciting. So that's the calendar. The next, the next part, piece I'm gonna talk a little bit about is the Pathways tab. You might recognize this work as Dave Heistad's work in terms of, you may have seen a rainbow graph with a few more lines on it. This is the same thing. So just to walk you through what you're seeing a little bit, the blue scores on the left there, those blue dots indicate MAP data, so that standardized test data over time. The yellow line up on top indicates a projected score. So this student, we're looking at sixth and seventh grade scores, the yellow is a projection of what is likely to happen, presuming average growth. And then the green lines are, are sort of, I would say benchmarks or, or indications of being on track, different levels of readiness. So the blue line is above all three green lines, but for reference, the bottom green line indicates being on track for two-year college eligibility. So students who scored, you know, at about two-ten or two-fifteen in seventh grade would be on track to be two-year college eligible. As we move up to the next green line, it's on track for four-year college eligibility and then four-year college readiness. So what I think is exciting about this particular feature is that very, you know, we've given scores to parents before, we've said they scored, you know, a two-sixty on the cult or whatever their MAP score might be, or maybe it's a fiftieth percentile. And so this context gives an additional sense of meaning for parents. Fiftieth percentile, that sounds like middle of the road, that's great. Are they on track to graduate? We've never been able to tell parents that, that directly before and giving them this additional way to help understand it is pretty exciting. I have a two and a five-year-old, I'm more familiar with the pediatric, you know, well visits. I wanna know, is my kid growing, right? Are they healthy? Are they growing too fast? Are they gaining weight too fast? We wanna, I wanna know that. To me, this is a very similar check-in in an academic, in an academic way. We're giving, giving that context so parents can understand it, it's not just a number. And then the last, the last thing is just an overview of all, all the different things that's, that are available to staff, parents and students in the hub. So this is what a student might see logging in. The cal, if you look on the left-hand side there, there's the, there's the calendar tab, we talked about that already. The news tab gives news feeds from the district news, as well as the school news, as well as classroom level news. So again, it's personalized news, they're not getting news that doesn't apply to them, they're getting news that does apply to them because it's from their teachers, their school and their district. There's an overview of the attendance, which hopefully students already know, but it's good to double-check and then parents obviously would like to know that as well, right? Absence and tardies are highlighted there, including any that are marked as unexcused. The Pathways tab, we already talked about, there's also an additional way to view grades. For several years, parents have been able to log into School View in order to look at grades. This doesn't replace School View, but it does highlight the overall grades so far, so you can see, you know, the kind of information that's available, the name of the course, the teacher, and then it clicks to a, so that you can contact the teacher right away, as well as gives a grade and the last time that grade was updated. So sometimes parents are waiting, you know, they turned it in yesterday, they turned it in yesterday, the grade hasn't changed. That highlights, you know, nope, it hasn't yet, but doesn't mean, doesn't mean it's not coming. And then an additional login to, to School View as well, so that if they wanna know why is it a C plus or why is it an A, how'd that last assessment go, it's one click away to log into School View as well to get that deeper dive into the, into their academic progress. And then the last tab there is the information tab. On there, things like student, parent contact information, locker combination to help students out, very important in the beginning of the school year and right after winter break. And student password to help them out, just lots of tools for teachers and parents to make sure that everyone's on the same page and can help students, with just some pretty simple stuff, but important things. There are two more tabs that are available, not to students, but are available to staff. One is discipline, so John was talking about how we have a discipline database already, but it's a separate thing, it's a separate login, you have to have it installed on your computer to use it. This puts it in the hub as well so that it's more readily available to staff, so that if they wanna check in and see why a student maybe isn't in their class, or they got an email that the student won't be in their class for a couple of days, this is one, one place they can see that. And then there's the health tab as well, so that highlights two pieces of health information about our students and that's available to parents and staff as well. And one of those is visits to the health office, just so that teachers can start to look for trends in terms of, are they visiting every, every, every day at the beginning of the day or other patterns that might emerge throughout a student's year, as well as any health concerns that would be very important for staff to know about. And it also makes sure that parents know what we have on file and can verify that that's the correct information, that that student still has that allergy, for example. So those are all the things that are available to staff as well as students and, and parents in different combinations, as is appropriate. So obviously I think the hub is pretty, pretty amazing, but so we looked at some data so that we can kind of back it up with something. We know that in the first two weeks of school, seven hundred and seven parents logged into the hub, just over, almost twenty-three hundred students logged in during the first two weeks of school and already fifteen hundred classroom calendars have been connected to the hub to start feeding those calendars for students. If we look, if we, you know, there's been about three weeks of school or so, if we look at the last couple of weeks, we've seen an uptick in all of those, which is definitely headed in the right direction. We've seen, we're seeing more parents logging in and so that's a great thing to see because very often we see the peak at the beginning of the year and then, you know, as, as they're getting to know the routines, but that, that communication is not only sustaining but growing is a great indication for the traction the hub is getting and how people are finding it useful. I'm gonna turn it over to Todd Walsh, he is a FIAD teacher and health teacher at Oak Grove Middle School. He teaches eighth grade as well as coaches Kennedy swimming. He's also at Oak Grove, tech teacher leader, so he helps a lot at Oak Grove with professional development, helping to get other teachers connected to the hub, as well as any other tech integration needs and support that they might have. So I'll turn it over to Todd to talk through his experience at Oak Grove.
Start this year with staff and connecting to the hub, it kinda came to me through summer training that I wasn't connecting to something anymore, I wasn't just putting up my contact information on a website saying, you know, here's how you can reach me by phone or, or email. It kinda came to me that I was connecting to, to families and students. And so last year when we connected our information to the hub, we kinda thought, this is it, we're connected, we don't have to come back. But I have new students this year and so I, I realized that, you know, each time my students change, my hub changes and I need to, you know, update that and connect it to all the folks that are in my classroom and, and learn from me and, and need to know the information. So this is, I think, just kind of a big light bulb moment for me and, and change how I look at, at what we're doing. Since nineteen ninety-nine, when I started in Bloomington, websites that we've done and, and the, and the way we communicate with parents has changed quite a bit. It's, it's awesome to see a tool that we've created or that we're creating here in the district that's connecting all of our tools together and giving us a way to more easily and quickly communicate to people. So it's evolving. Last year, the hub was, was, you know, there's my calendar, check it out, to where this year, there's not a day that's gone by yet that I haven't logged on to the hub to get information, either for my students or, or about my students. I was talking to another seventh grade teacher today as well and, and he kinda said the same thing. It's a tool that has evolved to allow us just to gain access in one spot to where we're used to get things in three or four places. The first day of school, TIES was down and Oak Grove staff jumped on the hub and we were able to get our rosters, you know, our updated rosters and get our seating charts going and everything like that, so that was really nice. The last thing is downloadable reports that we can get from the hub are really handy. We can get lists of our students' emails and parents' emails so that we can more easily generate communication home from that. As far as staff goes, we can go and get forms, things that we would normally try to sift through our regular Bloomington website to try to find, it's all in one spot. As far as the, you know, behavioral referrals for our students and the health, health visits and things like that, this is just an opportunity for teachers to have a real proactive conversation with students as we start to see trends develop. We can find, you know, if, if a student is going to the nurse's office every day at ten fifteen, we can have that conversation, what's going on at ten fifteen? It may be that it's a daily medical need, but it may be that there's some kind of issue really kinda wearing on that student during that time. So it's a real proactive place for us to be. I've enjoyed seeing that there's other siblings also, you can see that there's siblings in the district, so I can have that conversation with my students to say, oh, you have a brother or sister, you're the middle, you're the youngest, you're the oldest. Those are good conversations to have. It, it's, it's pretty sweet, if I could talk like I would in my classroom, sorry, I typically talk to students, not adults. So it's just really been, been a nice place to start this year, it's, it's been, it's been a smooth transition, I think, for us, even with students. And again, with the students, it's, it's, it's a work in progress. I think the students last year had a chance to kinda check it out. Now more, more of the staff, at least at Oak Grove Middle School, majority of the staff are, are connected and with the students, when they log on, their list is, is pretty long, so we've been teaching them, you know, to scroll to the bottom, so you can see the whole week. We've been teaching them how to set their preferences so that they can see the month at a, in a glance and they've really enjoyed, enjoyed that. Just go to the hub, go to the hub, go to the hub, I say that probably every day, every hour, you know, for every student in my room, probably. I had the conversation today with students, one of the things I really like is, is that we're, we're, we're meeting them where they are. Our kids are digital, they have digital devices in their pockets, they're coming to school and turning them off as they're supposed to be, but they have their digital devices. And the paper planner is awesome and there's, you know, a certain number of people that really can handle a paper planner. Being able to have it beep or buzz really helps them out a lot. So we're, we're allowing them to really, you know, work easier instead of trying to work harder, we're trying to just meet them where they're at. They have a, they have a place to go now too, to access their own locker combination when they forget. That's really helpful for them, I know, I've seen many of them go to it and, and check that out so they can get into their locker in the morning, especially on Mondays. I just think, you know, anytime, anywhere, it's, it's really nice. I had students that were at the cabin over the weekend and they had, they had a place to go where they could get to my project website to finish up the project that was due today. There's a little bit of difference between each and every staff member, the way we post to the hub. I think students are getting, becoming more aware of that and, and more, more adjusted to that. Some staff are really, really put a lot of information on there and I myself will link the, that particular date out to the project website that, that I use, so it's, again, just a tool to, to move them from one place to their information. As my, my, I have a sixth grader and a third grader, not in, in this district, but a di, different district and I, I'm frustrated that they don't have what we have. And so just, you know, as a parent, my sixth grader does his best to remember things and, it would be awesome to have this tool. I think the parents are gonna start to understand that the hub is the first place to go and TIES is the last place to go, because TIES is where you see the final score and the hub is where you see everything building up to the, to that. And the hub is where you see everything building up to the, to that score. So it's an awesome resource, I'm excited to see it evolve.
So just to piggyback on what Todd said about parents, you know, if I were to switch hats right now from tech project coordinator to new mom of a kindergartner, you know, the hub's already come in handy for me. We, you know, five-year-olds sometimes have opinions on things, and so one of those things is about shoes, right? And we were told very clearly that on, on FIAD days, you're not to wear Crocs. You're supposed to wear tennis shoes, which is a good rule, it's, it's good for everyone. So, you know, third day in, is today a PE day or can I wear my Crocs? I pulled up the hub, it's a PE day, you'll be wearing your tennis shoes, right? And that was agreed upon and that made the morning go that much more smoothly in my household. So as a parent already, I can appreciate the kind of communication that we're getting and that I have, you know, honestly, I had it on my phone next to my nightstand, whether that's healthy or not, that's a different story. But that's where it was, and when he came in at five forty-five, I had the answer to that question. So I could, I could help him already with that two weeks in. You know, and talking to some of my neighbors who are also parents of Bloomington kids, I was talking to a neighbor across the street who has a new sixth grader. And as you may know, the transition to middle school can be a challenge for both parents and for students in terms of just moving from sort of a single classroom-based experience to lots of different classrooms. And she already could appreciate the hub and helping smooth that transition for her daughter from elementary to middle school and just being able to know who all the teachers were, know what was expected each night, and just be able to help her daughter through that tran- transition. Her daughter, she, you know, she said is very responsible, is a great planner, has a whiteboard in her room where she wants to map out her whole week. And she too, her daughter appreciates the hub because she can look at the week, see what's coming up, map it out, figure out how that conflicts with ballet lessons and whatever else. And so it was a great, it's, you know, people are already starting to see some benefit in having that kind of information and know that it's accurate and know that it's actually meant for them. So that's a little bit about parents. So switching back to tech project coordinator role, so looking at what's coming up next. So like I said, you know, the, the hub is about a year and a half old, infancy moving to toddlerhood. So what's next developmentally for the hub, right? So we're looking at one feature that's hot off the presses is the digest. So we already have over two hundred people who have stumbled across it in the hub. And what you can do is sign up for a weekly or a daily email that comes to your inbox and summarizes the calendar for the week. And so students and, and parents have that ability to subscribe to that now so that it's not just that they have to log in to get the information, but the informa- information actually gets pushed to them, which is a nice feature. And we'll continue to market that as we know that it's reliable and make sure that those emails are going out so that we don't have people depending on them before the technology is for sure set in stone. So we'll be, over the next few months, we'll be helping people find that and get enrolled in that. We're also looking at the calendar piece. And, you know, right now, most, most students carry some sort of planner and are keeping track of things on their own. The calendar that you saw gives a lot of great information, but it's missing sort of that, some of the critical pieces of what, how students are using their planner right now. So our next phase is to look at how we can, we could more closely integrate some of those planner features, like flexibilities, that students could enter their own information. For example, they need to retake a test, they were gone one day and they need to do some makeup work, things like that, so that they have some flexibility in how they use the hub. And then looking at the pathways, you know, right now, the pathways tab that you just saw is based on map data. Students stopped taking the map in middle school. So looking at extending that graph out into high school, looking at using Dave Highstead's work to graph the explore, plan, and ACT sequence of scores in a similar fashion so that families still get that good context, but they get it with more timely data for high school students. So those are some of the things that we hope to be able to do, you know, in the, in the coming months and years as resources allow.
So what takeaways do we have from the first couple of weeks? You've heard some of, some of what these folks have said. You know, one of the things I would re-highlight is that ownership model. We own the hub and we own all of these good data sources and connecting them is important. And it's one-year-old, it's pretty impressive, if I must say so. It's pretty impressive that you can, that we can get this stuff working. We have talented people, we have talented developers, we have good data, but frequently the, the problem every district has is it's locked in silos. The hub is one of those tools that we can, we can use to break some of that data, the pertinent data, the five or ten things that are important to a parent or a student or a staff member that are important to get in front of them. Overall, you know, this is about creating tools and techniques for teachers to be effective in their classrooms. That's not a fair alarm, is it? This, this effort, Next Technologies for Learning, is about putting good tools in the hands of teachers so that they can be effective and they can take the next steps in learning in the classroom. A couple of, a couple of the data points that I wanted to make sure stuck. Seven hundred students, or seven hundred parents have logged in to look at what their students are doing in class. That's pretty impressive. Actually, we updated that today, it's eight hundred in the last, added that in the last week. Twenty-three hundred students are logging in in the last two weeks. Now that's up to twenty-eight hundred students who are logging in on a regular basis to check what is going on at school. That's pretty impressive. Fifteen hundred calendars. Teachers have created these calendars to document for parents, for students, for themselves, what's happening in my class and what can you do to prepare for class tomorrow. Fifteen hundred calendars have been interconnected. And I think Todd said it pretty well, which is, it's pretty sweet. So thank you very much for this little demonstration. We'll be back in a month to talk about access and we would take any questions that you have.
Thank you for your report and expanding our horizons. We appreciate you bringing that information to us tonight. We'll look forward to continuing to get these updates as to our, our adaption of technology and how it's working in order to help with our family engagement and student engagement and teacher readiness. It's all fitting together very well. And you're educating us as well as educating the community coming forth this time, so thank you. Thank you for the presentation, I'd love it. And Director Burstam.
Yes, I'd like to echo Tim's sentiment, thank you very much for coming. John, Todd, Katrina. Todd, I have to tell you, after the first four weeks of school, my eighth grade son says you're his favorite teacher.
Can that be noted for the record?
I think these mics are working. So I have a couple of questions and, and I'm not sure who would answer them. I apologize, I don't have the number of the slide here. But when you're, when you're on the hub and you're looking at, let's see, we have, we have some grades here. And there's a picture of the, an iPhone there. It looks like you can link to SchoolView. Can you, as, as a parent who doesn't want to have to try and remember another login, is it, are we going to eventually just get to be able to roll the mouse over that? Or, or will the software recognize who I am when I'm, when I'm linked into the hub and then automatically log me into a SchoolView so I can look to see, you know, kind of toggle back and forth? So that's, that's one question. Also, are the, are the, are the parents aware of the, of the new app? That, that has the little, the little gear, and I think that's the hub icon in, in the bottom. Does everybody know about that? If they shouldn't, I know that there's thousands of people watching tonight, so they'll all know tomorrow. But, I mean, it, that, that's really useful, I think. And then the people, the parents that are using it, the seven hundred and seven, is that, are we getting three hundred people that check four times a day? Or, so it's seven hundred unique or now eight hundred?
Seven hundred unique, yes.
Oh, fabulous. And then, just real quick, Todd, what do you think your coworkers would say about this experience? Are they as enthusiastic as you?
There, yeah, I mean, some, those of us that are a little more tech savvy than others have picked up on it pretty quickly. I think we're moving from, getting away from our paper planners also as teachers, moving to the digital calendar in our Google apps. I think they're starting to see that it is a pretty, I hate to use the word easy, but it's a pretty smooth working system once it, once we get it set up. I think they're going to like it when we, when I can go back and share these numbers. I think these numbers are amazing, that, what's your name? Just shared with us? So I think that, you know, the number of hits that we're seeing are, are, are pretty good. So I think, I think they're going to start recognizing too that, that the importance of it and jump on board too, so. I, I would, I would say probably eighty-five percent of the staff at Oak Grove are pretty into it. I don't have, I never took a survey, but I'd say about that.
And then if they're not as tech savvy as you and Katrina and John, say for instance, like me, and, and they don't have an eighth grade and a sixth grade son to explain how the things work, are, are you maybe go-to people? Is there a, is there a go-to person in each building that would say, I'll give you five minutes, I'll give you ten minutes, here's a quick overview and, and look at this thing, it's really sweet?
Right. At Oak Grove, it's ten minutes with Todd. If they want to, to spend some time on the hub and get it connected, it's about ten minutes, people are full, I mean, so. Tara Olfeld too, the media specialist is another go-to in our building. I think the other two middle schools has, has go-to people as well, so.
Our CT program at each, at each site has, have CTs who are trained in the hub and can help give that support to staff members who need it. Most sites did some training for all staff during back-to-school week. And then there's CT, CT positions that are available to help support ongoing needs.
And then I'll answer a couple of your other questions, Dick. SchoolView to the hub, SchoolView, if you consider it one of those deep data sources, it has lots and lots of detailed information. Sometimes one of the criticisms of SchoolView is people get lost in all that data and it's hard to tell the forest for the trees. Our intent with the hub isn't about eliminating SchoolView, it's about taking the top five in several areas, bringing it out, surfacing it, getting it in people's hands. If you think about it as a Venn diagram, as every good math teacher would want you to, you know, SchoolView is one circle and the hub is another circle, and those two circles are starting to overlap. And so the hub is that intersection between the two. It would be my desire that you could click on that SchoolView link and it would pass you directly into SchoolView, but I suppose that'll be a couple of years down the road. Ties is a great partner of ours, they're also a third-party system. And so getting their data systems to talk to our data systems is a, is a particularly high hurdle. Whereas some of the other data systems where we own the front end and we own the back end, we can force those systems to talk to each other. Getting SchoolView and the hub to talk to each other, we do that through an API. And right now, it, it only can draw out a certain amount of data, not the deep data. So including names and passwords. And then your other questions about the, the iOS app. We've got a number of things happening in place right now. The description of that app just went out to staff la- the end of last week. It's another one of those transitions where we didn't pile everything to the start of the school year. We're a couple of weeks in, so we can gradually roll it out to make sure that it's clean and flawless. But it would, it will come to the parent publications. And we already see, I can't remember, I didn't ask Danny today, but hundreds of downloads of that iOS app without any advertisement. So we know that word is getting around, probably thanks to you, half of them. Then the, your other questions, I think, I think these guys answered your other questions. We talk about what Todd said as, you know, the ease of use for non-techies, we talk about that as a soft landing. So in any tech tool, we try to create supports for the whole spectrum of, of students and parents and staff so that we can get a soft landing, get the most bang for the buck. And that means making simple systems, not overcomplicating things, using the same username and password wherever we can and providing training. And then on the, on the other end of that, we talk about supports. So as Katrina said, the CT program, the media directors in all of our buildings, people like Todd who lead, who are teacher leaders in their buildings, and then the parent networks and so on, so on. They actually are the people, the feet on the ground because us at the district office, it's hard for me to know what's happening at Normandale Hills or in Indian Mounds. People there who need to work with the twenty-eight problems and training opportunities that come up in a day. And the three that they can't handle, they can send to us and then we can come and, and fill in those gaps.
Great, thank you, thank you very much for coming tonight.
Other more questions? Jack Ailbuck?
Well, excellent report, and I want to go on record as being a supporter of technology, but I think you know that the, one of the concerns the board has is accessibility. And you're going to speak to that, John, I assume, you said in about a month. But if you look at very, at some of your data, very roughly, eight hundred parents, that's maybe three to five percent coming on, and students, you had twenty-eight hundred students, that's maybe twenty-five percent. Is that because of access problems or newness problems?
I would think it's a combination. When we measure, so I'll remind, we've done some rough estimates about, around access and we think we're dealing with anywhere between a, a four to ten percent access problem throughout the district or issue throughout the district, difficulty connecting to the internet from home at schools or outside of school. So I think a small portion of that is access, it's probably more about access to information, knowing that the tools exist, and then knowing how to interact them, with them, that is, how to do school. It's a challenge you hear Dina and her crew talk about all the time, it's a challenge you hear administrators and teachers talk about all the time about getting, how can we get a hundred percent of parents to show up at conferences? How can we get, how can we engage people where they're at and overcome all the many challenges people have with busy lives and so on? I think you're seeing it reflected here. The numbers to me seem pretty good, considering again that we're one-year-old and we look at technology tools as on this kind of three-year, three-year transition. So we see a high level of engagement in terms of, you know, if we, if we looked at the transition to using the internet even or using email, that transition, those technology adoption cycles tend to be longer scale. So we think we've got good information that's drawing people in and will keep them in.
Those eight hundred parents are, how many households is that? Do you have any knowledge of that?
Hard to slice and dice that. We have, I, we have about eight hundred families, between seven hundred and eight hundred families, so it's roughly around ten percent. You know, having two high school-aged sons myself and helping support SchoolView through the years of adoption at Jefferson, what we, what we noticed and what I see at home is, I have one son who's self-sufficient. I don't need to go onto the portal to look at his homework every night. And so for that, I rely on him and I check in with him. I want him to be self-sufficient in that way and I want to encourage it. Thinking about my other son, I need to log in every night and help support that good organizational skills that he's having trouble developing. So for our family, is that three logins, is it two logins, is it one login? Frankly, I think a lot of parents who have high-achieving kids, who are self-sufficient, may not need to go to the hub. Or they maybe need to go to, to cross-check once a month to see if what they're hearing and seeing is, is accurate. And students who are well-organized and who have their own planning methods may not need to be there. It's not, it's not a replacement for what you have, and as you heard Katrina talk about, it does about sixty percent of what a planner would do, but it doesn't do a hundred percent of what a planner would do. So when I've been out and talking to a, a language arts classroom last, or two weeks ago, there was a student, front row, with her planner open, lots of notes there, she probably is not a good hub candidate. But she's frankly got her act together and doesn't need somebody to fill in those gaps and, and provide those supports. Lot of people sitting in the back, three rows of that class, who might really benefit.
Correlation? Is there a correlation between?
I don't know who made the seating chart, but she was front and center and really participating and engaging in a, in a very dynamic way.
Katrina, you mentioned the digest, I think on, on- Katrina, you mentioned the digest, I think on slide thirteen. Who prepares that?
Who prepares it?
Yeah.
So it's all programmed in each, I guess, it's all programmed in, so it's just an automatic...
Didn't you say the digest was a composite summary of what was happening in the hub?
Yeah, so it's just another view of what's happening in the hub. It's focused right now on the calendar view. So for example, I would get a week calendar for my son. Everything that the teachers have posted to their calendars gets aggregated day by day and then that's what gets sent in email form to me. So it could be a supplemental or it could frankly replace me logging into the hub. So that's another thing that complicates the question about, you know, why are there only that many people logging into the hub? We know there's now over two hundred families that are getting that in their inbox, which would mean they don't need to log into the hub as much.
Yeah, good point, good point. And then with the calendar, this is designed for primarily student viewing, the calendar? In other words, they don't, they would not see, the student would not see that on Tuesday, October second, there's a PTSA meeting?
Correct. Yeah, it's a student view, it's linked to a student's particular course load. There are other calendars available throughout the website that have those types of events and, you know, the news feed would be somewhere where they might highlight, you know, a school might choose to highlight that and that goes into the parent view so that you can target parents in a similar fashion, but through the news feed.
All in all, I think it's a great idea. I think you guys are doing well. Thank you.
Director Hibbs?
Mr. Chair, I just have one question and that is, is the student, the SDS, the student data system, is that being actively maintained at kind of the same level as Dr. Angemeyer was? I had heard from a principal that Dr. Angemeyer was very, I mean, he was in there like every night putting data in and that it's not, they're not seeing the data go in there as often now, so it's not quite as useful.
Yeah, so Jim is still supporting the student data site from his retirement home in beautiful Bloomingdale. We still work with Jim pretty closely in two regards. One is to support the existing student data site. It's his programming that underlies the data site and as you said, he is in there tinkering or he was in there tinkering quite regularly. His role is now, number one, to support that student data site so it stays up. We're in a year-long transition to move that student data site off of its existing platform. It's built on a technology that we no longer use and we're moving it over into Drupal, which is the platform on which the hub is built and the school website is built, over this year period. So I see Jim every week and we have meetings about the next phase of that transition. The goal there is a couple of things. One is to modernize and reorganize. We talk about the student data site started as a one-room little, great little house and then it had an addition and a second floor and a garage added on and if you were to build, rebuild the student data site today, you wouldn't rebuild it in the same method. So we are in fact taking that data, moving it over to a new place and building it on a structure and a foundation that'll be built to last. Plus it'll have three or four or half a dozen people who know how to support it and not a single person. So that's a one-year transition. The other great benefit to doing that is it's built in the same language as the hub and the student data site. So where you see a glimpse of pathways as a valuable resource for parents, there's lots of other great assessment data inside that student data site that is contained there that we want to let loose. So we talk about progress monitoring for students who struggle, especially at the elementary level. We identify a student who's struggling, we put in learning supports to support that student, catch them up. The progress monitoring that takes place, takes place inside the student data site. It would be great if we could get that real-time data to those families to say, "How did this week's assessment go and are they, is my daughter on track to improve, to catch up because she started out the year behind?" So lots of advantages, it's a year-long process that we're going through.
So is there anything being done to try to mitigate the loss of that information for the year?
No, no data is being lost.
Well, I mean, I don't mean the data, but what I had heard from the principal was, whereas they could go in there day by day by day and track all their students because of this transition, it sounds like that's not as easy to do because it isn't being maintained with the same regularity.
Well, that may be the case. The same data feeds are all active, they're nightly updated. Whereas Jim was a phone call away to a teacher or a principal last, or two years ago, he now works on a weekly schedule and so that's probably the lack of responsiveness that you're hearing. The second lack of responsiveness is, if I wanted some new feature or some new report built, I would call Jim and he would build it. So we're on that transition, we're not building new features into the existing data site, but we think that the payoff will be great. So I think the combination of those two factors is probably what you're hearing. But the full functionality of what's there and what Jim built should be sustained this year.
And this new database, if you will, that you're constructing, is this the continuation of the replacement of what we once upon heard Jefferson was piloting, which would allow teachers to see visually kind of which students were on track and which ones were maybe in a kind of caution state and which ones were in trouble there? I mean, it was color-coded and so forth. We heard a lot about that in a relationship with Ties, maybe three, four, five years ago. In fact, I know Dr. Angemeyer and the Ties folks were going around to school board conferences talking about that. So is this, is this an extension or a continuation of that or?
Yeah, you're talking about what Ties refers to as the PLP, Personalized Learning Plan. That still exists and so a school could still be engaged in that personalized learning plan.
In this district.
The challenge around the personalized learning plan is it doesn't pull in these other data systems where we gather data independently. I would say that the hub is going to be that thing. The goal of our entire effort is to personalize learning for students and part of that is getting the right data in front of the right people. So I think already the hub is a richer source of data than simply having a Schoolview account or seeing that PLP. And then since we own it, there is the 2013 features followed by the 2014 features and so on. I was in several of those early meetings about the PLP, the development of the PLP too at Jefferson.
Thank you. Thank you. Director Corman?
Well, I can say that the hub is a pretty cool tool. It has been, you know, really helpful for me as a parent and for my daughter. My middle schooler, she checks the hub every day, so we live with the hub already at home. Now, this is us who are able, you know, just one of the families who are able to have access. Again, we talk about, you know, access challenges and I know that we're working towards, working together with parents with our parent engagement programs and, you know, and looking for ways to provide access for everybody. But I'd like to ask you, number one, you know, right now, how do you deal every day with those challenges of maybe having the student that wasn't able to check the hub, is not checking it at all? And then with homework in terms of, for example, Google Docs and when the kids need to do homework at home or in the night, sometimes my daughter is doing that ten in the night. And when she's doing that, again, I'm thinking, there's another student out there who's not able to do this, not able to finish his homework. And then there's the case, like it happened a few weeks ago with a middle schooler who I know, whose Google Docs was not working in her computer because of the type of device that she had. Fortunately, her family is able to go to the next, you know, the following day and go to the store and buy the beautiful Mac, right? And then she's able to go back in there and she's back on track. But so what happens then with those students? What's happening right now? I'm not thinking about, you know, once we get all the parents trained for this and that and once we get all the technology help that we need. Right now, how are teachers facing those issues? What's happening? How are you dealing with that and what are we doing with our students who are having those challenges so that they're not always behind and behind and behind?
I can speak to what my team and I'm doing. We have a tremendous amount of technology in our building. In my classroom, I have six students' machines that they can come in before school, even when they're dropped off, or they can come in during primetime, they can get permission from their teacher to come to my primetime and can do their work. I have students that come down to the pool deck and sit at the table with one of my machines and they'll be working until I'm done with practice. You know, then we have after-school activities where they're getting on the computers as well or... So here at Old Grove, we can accommodate that kind of need with our policies as they are. I don't find students getting too far behind as we can do some catching up here or there. But, you know, like our Thursday flex days, if they haven't been assigned to a specific class to do work, then they have an opportunity there that they can get onto a computer and get some of their work done as well.
I could cite a couple of examples that came to mind as you were talking. One is the, most of these tools or all of these tools are web-based, so they don't require certain hardware, certain equipment. We're building for mobile. I don't know if it came out in this presentation, but our latest data is that fifteen percent of all the clicks that we get on our website come from a mobile or a tablet device. So three years ago, that was four, five percent. Last year, it grew from nine to twelve percent. Right now, first three weeks of school year, it's at fifteen percent. So we know people are connecting in their own way. Maybe it's not as good as having a full computer, but that's one piece or one data point. A couple of anecdotes that came to mind is, one thing we're working at right now with where Valleyview Middle School is a process when they have conferences. Their, Ben McGrass is going to modify their, the start of conferences by having students or having parents come in, sit down at a computer, log into the hub, get the information that they need to then have an informed conference with the teacher. So it's part of an educational process about how to do school and about getting good data right there before you start so that the teacher doesn't have to repeat over and over again some of that same information, get right to the heart of the matter. And then similarly, we're working with the American Indian Program, Heidi Hecker. She's having a parent information night coming up in a week or two weeks, I don't know the date, and she's asking for some cheat sheets so that she can take her group, take them to the computer lab, show them the resources that are available there. If a parent or a family shows up at any of our schools, goes down to the media center and says, "I don't have a computer at home," you know, I've talked about this before, we have older but quite capable machines that we can give them. Really, this NTL plan, part of the tough part that we need to help scale up is getting them access. So filling in that access gap. And we know that that's something that we need to accommodate right now so that we can help solve it next year and the following year.
I would also add that I, you know, in the last year or so, there have been, there's hardware. So NOOCs, for example, or Chromebooks available for checkout in media centers and in, I believe, every school. Kennedy this year has four Chromebooks and four wireless or cellular hotspots available for package checkout so that if a student has a particularly demanding project where they are going to need to be on and they know they aren't going to have access at home, they can check out that package for a certain amount of time in order to gain access. If they can't stay after school, most secondary in particular, media centers are open before and after school for certain hours during homework connection, et cetera. So, you know, most, it seems like on a case-by-case basis, I think we heard Holly and Kelsey say, as well as Greg and Adam say, that teachers are, you know, dealing with those on a case-by-case basis and helping students get what they need. And because it's a five to ten percent of anyone's student, students, that they can sort of do that on that case-by-case basis and help them troubleshoot.
And students will know where to go if they're having issues with their Google, right?
Yeah.
That they're not able to access for some reason, it doesn't show or it's not saving or something, they know where to go, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of along the same lines when our ink used to run out on our printer, right, as we're trying to print, right? I mean, technology's up and down, so mostly up. Tom's speaking more for the Google and Google stops working sometimes and, you know, it's, we just take those and we roll with them, it's okay, it's real life, so.
But if it is an issue of their device, like can they bring it to the school, maybe for somebody to look at it, check it out and see if there's something that can be done so that they don't need to buy a different device?
Yeah, I have students that have brought their home laptop in and we'd look at it and talk it through.
In the language arts classroom that I talked about, I was in, I was helping a girl connect Google calendars on her phone, so, yeah. And as far as the adults in the organization, we regularly have adults who come by the tech center in the technology office to have us take a look at this device or that device. Not necessarily school equipment, but we want people to be productive and so we're here to help. Including Mr. Avelin, whose iPad I have over there.
There you go. All right, is there further discussion? Then again, thank you.
Thank you. See you in one month.
We'll now move to the portion of our agenda for board member reports. Board members have anything to let us know about their official duties? Director Bush?
I had an interesting, I actually connected with all three of my schools, which doesn't happen too often, but I went to a core meeting at Jefferson, which is always very interesting. And then I went to the early childhood meeting at Pond and Southwood is one of my schools or of course they're part of that too. And then I had just been last Monday night at Westwood, so that was, I don't know if I've done that before, but then of course we ended the week with the Heritage Parade and the school board had a space in the parade. You should have come with us last. But I got to drive my red convertible again, so the rest of the board members all walked and handed out gifts to kids and it was a great, great day. And yesterday I had an interesting thing. My next-door neighbor showed me he had taken a picture of me driving the convertible, so that was kind of fun. But it was a great crowd and nice to be part of it and the schools. I don't know how many of our schools were in it, but they were really great.
Thank you. Other reports? Director Brooks?
Yes, just real quickly, I happened to attend the same meeting that Arlene was at for the Parent Advisory Council over at Pond. I just want to give a quick shout-out to Parent Advisory. If you want to look on the district website, you can find a link to the Parent Advisory Council. I'm sure they'd love to have you come to their meetings. It's a wonderful organization that does a lot of things for our parents of very young students, so that's what I have.
Other board reports?
Hey, I'd share my participation with the Community Services Advisory Committee. We had an opportunity to hear about the Richfield Technology Referendum as well as a presentation was given by our Communications Director, Rick Kaufman, regarding our referendum. There is also approval of a new member of the council, a goal-setting process, so they... There are a goal-setting process, so they devised some goals for two, twenty thirteen, fourteen, including, uh, continuing to get community, uh, reports in terms of, um, various programs, not only in, uh, community education, community services, but throughout the cities of Richfield, Bloomington, that engage families and provide recreational, educational opportunities. I found being a member of that committee has been, uh, educational to me in, uh, learning more about what is available through, uh, Parks and Recreation and through, uh, other kind of, uh, recreational informational programs. We have a lot of great, uh, resources in the, in the two cities, and it's a good information-sharing opportunity. And as well, there was a, uh, presentation, a reminder to our, our audience of the, uh, visit by, uh, Secretary of Education, Arnie Duncan, a little earlier this summer. And then we had the National Education Association President, Dennis von Rangell, visited Hillcrest, and, um, we had quite a turnout of, uh, our teachers in order to welcome the, the head of the National Union.
Other reports? Superintendent's report, Superintendent Fujitaki.
Thank you. The next school war meeting is October fourteenth at seven P.M. here in the Educational Services Center. Erde's Day celebration was a great event for our school district. All the schools participated in the parade, and it was a great memory builder for our community. So thank you very much for everybody's participation. African-American Women and Men in Need is a Minnesota not-for-profit organization. Last week, Thursday, they held their annual event, and it was titled "Helping the Community Rise to the Top." And it was held at the Urban League Center in North Minneapolis. Holston Elementary Principal Paul Meyer and I gave separate speeches at that event. Paul Meyer spoke about his growing-up days in North Minneapolis. It was a great speech, so that went over really well. There's a Georgetown apartment complex. It's a larger complex, apartment complex in northwest Bloomington. And a hu- over a hundred fifty kids from that complex attend our schools. Last week, the property manager invited the principals from Valley View Elementary, Valley View Middle, Kennedy High School. We had a representative from Office of Educational Equity, Richard Scott. A representative from our volunteer program, Sue Martel. They accepted her invitation, met with her, talked about collaborative opportunities to provide learning support for the children of that complex. And that meeting went so well, they're gonna have follow-up sessions to meet, to explore further, how they can further develop learning supports at that complex for those children. So that was a great development, and I'll keep the board posted on that. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you. Is there any other business to come to the board tonight?
Mr. Chair, are we gonna discuss Saturday's session?
My understanding is we're not going to have a Saturday session.
Really?
Right. So you can clear your calendar. The board needs to have an opportunity to discuss, um, some things that were not, uh, communicated. I had thought that we were moving ahead on a proposal that was presented to us in, uh, working with a consultant on our organization development, but, uh, apparently that remains, uh, pretty sketchy as to what the involvement of the board has been in, in, uh, agreeing to the, the outline. So, um, latest recommendation from, uh, Dennis Cheeseborough and his, uh, as a representative of that, um, organization would be that we, um, have further discussion and, uh, outline what it is we want to accomplish before we move into, uh, an initial planning session. Is it, is that a about correct summary? Okay. So, uh...
Now, we have to do more...
We need to, we need to have a conversation regarding our goals prior to our conversation regarding our goals.
And when are we gonna do that?
Would the board like to discuss that at this time? There's nothing on our schedule on Saturday, no. So would you like to have a pre-meeting to review, uh, outline?
I have Saturday open.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Director Hibbs?
Based on our past history, I'd rather not have a free-for-all. And so I would hope that maybe the chair could prepare something in advance that would kind of guide our discussion, uh, allow us to prepare our thoughts. I'm not sure that you've got time to do that before Saturday, that would be up to you.
Further ideas?
I'm, you know, I'm open for Saturday, too, 'cause I have separated that date for that. Yeah, it's kind of like the opportunity that we have to talk, but...
I turned down an invitation from one of my mothers for, to go to something Saturday morning.
But I also agree, you know, we need to know what we're gonna be talking about unless we're gonna be coming from our priorities that we have discussed before. The ones that we already have.
What do you think, Les?
Board members? Like I said, I have Saturday open. I, I, I don't know what we're going to be discussing, but...
Yeah, I don't wanna meet just, just to meet. We have to have an agenda of some sort.
I, I don't recall being put in charge of the agenda, so I don't, I don't know what we're supposed to do.
Well, maybe we should take a little time. Um, how much time is there before we would have to be meeting with Cheeseborough?
Did you see how many sessions there are in the times? I mean, this is a big commitment.
Yeah, yeah.
But as I read that, that agenda or that proposal, I should say, that's Mr. Cheeseborough's idea of the ultimate maximum professional development. It doesn't have to be that extensive, does it?
Well, it's quite a, an all-encompassing, uh, document that we're...
Oh, right, that's his, that's his proposal for a job-job. I mean, he wants that money, therefore he's validating that, I assume. We don't have to go all the way, do we?
I wouldn't wanna go halfway on this conversation. I'd prefer to go all the way. We're gonna have it, we may as well do it right.
But, you know, it has dawned on me that four, three of us, four of us on this board right now are up for election. One cho- one has chosen not to go for a reelection. It could happen come November sixth, we have four brand-new members. Why, why don't we wait for this to find out who our board members will be after November fifth and then work on it?
That thought passed through my mind, so...
Yeah, we could have as many as four new members. We could have one new member, we could have any amount of new members, but they should have, if we're gonna set priorities, I would think they should have some input.
Don't we get, and David, check me if I'm wrong, but don't we get into some legal issues? If, after an election, uh, let's say we have four new board members, but they're not technically sworn in, can they contribute to a goals conversation before they're sworn in? Wouldn't we then be having, what is that, eleven?
They certainly couldn't vote on...
They can certainly be here and, and listen, but can they...
Well, I understand what Lyle's saying, but you're right. I mean, November sixth is not, or whatever, November Day is not the day that they're new members. Doesn't mean you could...
Two months later.
Well, they could, they could be invited, but they wouldn't participate in the conversation.
Well, I think, well, I'm not a legal beagle, but I would imagine you could have a board discussion along with citizen, special citizen participation, whoever they would be. I don't think we would deny them participatory rights, would we?
Well, this, this is all gonna be televised anyways, so, I mean, everyone will participate, right?
We work hard, we televise everything.
Well, who can make a move, it doesn't have to be...
I don't know, I just think that, I mean, we've kicked this can so far down the road, as long, you know, I'd say two years we've been trying to do this, so we wanna put it off another six months?
I, I have to say candidly, I, I don't quite know why we're at the position we're in right now. It was my expectation that among those questions that were presented to us in the email that I shared, um, those were going to be part of the process, that we were gonna have a facilitate conversation. And so I'm, um, kind of at a loss that we're presented with questions about what the scope and purpose is when I thought our discussion would begin with the scope and purpose, with a facilitator leading us through that process. So I'm uncomfortable with where we are right now. I thought there was an agreement on a format and a, a beginning point. Uh, board members were asked for other opportunities to meet, although that didn't come together. I thought we were prepared to, um, to begin a process on Saturday in which we would have some help in taking a look at what it was that we felt were board priorities moved forward. I don't feel comfortable that I can set those items and lead a discussion about that. That's why we wanted to have an outside facilitator. So I'm not even sure how we'd move forward at this point, answering that list of questions. I thought that's what we're paying a facilitator to do with us. So I don't actually know what we're doing. I thought also that there was some agreement that it made sense for the board to talk about the role of the board and the roles of board members and priorities, uh, based on what our experience has been as members of this board. So I would not necessarily think that it becomes profitable to say, "Let's kick it down the road a little bit further, and then we'll pick it up with some new members, and then they can give their impressions of what they ought to be doing," rather than having the benefit of the participation of, um, those board members who've been through a certain amount of time on the board and had a chance, as, as Director Bartolotti said, to, um, consider this over the last couple of years, whether it's kick the can or process it, or whatever it might have been. Um, we may also have significantly the same board coming together at the beginning of the year. There's no, uh, guarantee or no expectation on my part. Matter of fact, I doubt that there'd be a significant change in the makeup of this board after the first year. So, um, I don't, I don't quite know why we're at this point. I thought there was an understanding as to what this process was, and we had a contract agreement, uh, with a facilitator for it, and, and for that not to have happened, I don't, I don't understand why. So I, I don't know that we wanna just meet on a Saturday and have a conversation. I don't think that was very productive when we tried to do that earlier this year. That's why we want a facilitator.
So are you saying we have a contract with the facilitator?
Apparently we don't have a contract with the facilitator. I had expected we'd moved along in that direction once we had, uh, agreed on some dates and we were going to, uh, employ, um, Mr. Cheeseborough to lead us, so...
And, and he will not come unless he has a kind, a signed contract?
I have not had that direct communication with him, other than the email that I received. I, I thought there was an understanding, it'd be helpful to have a facilitated dialogue regarding board priorities.
Well, apparently there's been a lack of communication somewhere along the way. So it looks like we're gonna pass on the opportunity to, to have a conversation Saturday morning? Is that what I'm hearing? Otherwise, we're just seven of us friendly people having a conversation Saturday morning when we could be doing something else.
Well, I, I guess I'm still not understanding that one. I thought the proposal involved an initial three-hour meeting that was going to address some of the questions that were in that email to me. I don't know if the problem is we don't have a formal contract, and I don't know why we, we don't have a formal contract. So I'm not sure why we're, we're, where we are right now, and I would think the next step would be to use our Saturday time and our appointment with, uh, with Mr. Cheeseborough in order to, uh, address these very questions that are coming, coming before us now.
But he wouldn't be there.
I don't know if he's going to be there. I, is the idea that he's, he doesn't want to meet with us until, and who's supposed to do this? Are we supposed to meet with the superintendent and come up with an agreement among us as to what the scope is going to be? I don't know how this process works. I, I thought that we were contracting with a professional to lead, lead us through the process.
Well, this, this email was addressed to you, so did you not respond to him?
I received that email the end of last week.
But you haven't responded to him?
I have responded to him with a voicemail message, did not hear back directly from him. I believe I have a more recent email. I've not received a response to key questions, but it was an email sent last week. Seems a signed contract for services is a lead item that he's concerned about.
So he, he would not come on the full faith and word of the, of the district without a signed contract?
You know, when I read that, I'm just, I'm, I'm paraphrasing, but I'm hearing him say, "What are we doing?" "Why are we doing it?"
Now that he's gonna pay me.
"What's going on?" I'm not seeing, "I need payment first." I'm just seeing somebody asking, "What's..."
"What's the agenda?"
"What's the agenda, what's going on? What are we gonna do, what are we gonna talk about? What do you want me to facilitate?" That's what I see when I read that note.
'Cause this is quite the, on page three, this is a big undertaking. So I guess that's what has to be agreed upon.
All right. Does everyone have a copy of the proposal? Yes, yes, yes. Does anyone not have a copy of the proposal?
What time are we decided to?
How, how do you wanna break that down? What, what are your questions, or where does that lead you to think that we are in, in this process? Is there anything you don't agree with, is there? I mean, I, I had thought that, I was reading that as that he would facilitate a process. Timing, scheduling of sessions, after the first session, I don't think we got to that. Agenda and outcomes for the first extended, extended session agreed to.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I just think that you, as chair, need to negotiate with Mr. Cheeseborough directly, come to some agreement as to what, uh, you know, what the first steps are, and, uh, and then direct the administration to enter into a contract and make sure that he gets payment. But I don't think we're getting anywhere tonight, and I would, uh, move to adjourn.
Second.
Moving second to adjourn. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.